I'll call this meeting of the city council to order for Tuesday, January seventeen, two thousand twenty-three. We have a work session tonight. The recorder will please call a roll.
Counselor Stapleton, I'm here. Counselor Nishioka?
Here.
Counselor Phillips is absent. Counselor Gwen?
Here.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Here.
Counselor Hoy?
Here.
Counselor Nordike?
Present.
Counselor Barney?
Here.
And Mayor Hoy?
Here. And if you will join me for part of which. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and just. Thank you. Our counselor Stapleton, do we have?
Yeah, I want approval of a special meeting agenda. Second.
Any discussion? The recorder will please call a roll.
It's your Stapleton. Hi. Counselor Nishioka?
Aye.
Counselor Phillips is absent. Counselor Gwen? Aye. Counselor Gonzalez?
Aye.
Counselor Hoy? Aye. Counselor Nordike?
Aye.
Thank you. Counselor Barney? Aye. And Mayor?
Aye. Passes. Counselor, do we have any additions or additions to be attended?
Aye.
Excellent. And with that, we will go on to item number two, which is discussion number one, the two thousand twenty-three policy council policy agenda, and we will turn it over to Strategic and Experience Manager.
Thank you. I'm just gonna take a quick minute to share the screen so that people can see what we're talking about. And and so tonight, what we're doing is bringing back to you a continuation of your conversation from Phil Damer, where we had a work session and you talked about the priorities that they have for the coming year. This is the policy agenda, so this is your work plan for the coming year, and it's where you give us direction about the priorities that you want to fund in the coming budget. So this is a really important time for us to make sure that we understand each other about what you want to accomplish. And in your November work session, you looked at the annual community report, which is a summary of our progress on those things that you've asked us to do in the year before. You also got a chance to consider the community's feedback on priorities, which is through an annual statistically valid sampling we do of community satisfaction with our services. And then you also got a chance to listen a little bit to each other about your priorities. I mean, and you heard from Colleen Rizilis, who did the facilitation for that session. So this is again, it's just a chance to check in, make sure we heard you correctly, and are looking at the right priorities for the coming year.
Pretty clear for one moment, please. I I meant to say this upfront, I forgot, but since this is our first work session as a new council, I just kind of wanted to tee that for a second. You notice that we're over here in the Anderson Room, we're around a table. The idea is to make a much less formal environment than council chambers. The idea is that we are able to have a conversation, have a deep dive on whatever the topics are, and this is our chance to really learn about the issues at hand. And so ask all the questions that you have. People asked earlier, like how long we might go, and that really depends on you, how much how much interest there is, how much information do you feel like you need to fully understand this? Because these are items, obviously this first one and certainly the second one, will be coming before us at some point in the future for some sort of action. So you, the idea is staff is trying to load you up front with as much information as possible. So that the goal tonight is for you to understand these topics at a pretty deep level. So, thank you.
And to just follow on, for this work session, we're just looking for kind of consensus about that we're hitting in the right spot for this portion of our conversation. And then staff will be bringing at the next meeting, the first meeting in February, assuming we understand each other, will bring back a a formal, sort of pretty looking policy agenda. And last year, it looked like this. This year, it's different and better, but this is what will happen at your first meeting, and we'll ask for you policy. So this again is just a chance to check in that we've got things mostly right. And. So, so what we heard as just the beginning of our understanding is we heard that you want us to retain your existing priorities and the community's priorities and finish what we started from a strategic plan and these years that we've been working together. And those four priorities, you can see on the screen, responding to our sheltering crisis, planning for our future, engaging our community, and sustaining infrastructure service to the community. So those four big priorities, you said, stay the course, keep those things moving, and we think we heard you, and we're gonna do that next year. And I'm just gonna move the little zoom feature so that you can see what we're talking about. And so I wanted to just point to those things that we're adding, which we think are also reflected from your conversation in November. You can see that we heard an interest in advancing the housing production strategy. We can do that. This is follow-on work from our Salem, and it's really critical and important work to to building our future. We think we can do that beginning in the fiscal year, starting July first, by taking advantage of structural changes.
Corey, I'm starting to, but I just kind of noticed that people are having a difficult time hearing.
For reals?
Yeah.
So David, is it you? Just point you if I did this up.
Nope.
Oh, it's in the lines. But then you think.
Also, the interpreter is having a little trouble hearing too, so it's not just in the room.
Yeah. Okay, so I'm just gonna pull it out. All right, ready? Good. Okay. And then it's wired. Got it? All right.
Is that better? Can we do a sound check really quickly?
I'm sure it's better.
So Nishioka says yes, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback, not the bad kind that we're reverbing in your ears. Thank you, David. Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Melissa, for doing that. Okay, so again, we're just confirming that we heard correctly, the general consensus for your direction. Advancing the housing production strategy is something we think we can do earlier, as early as July first, in order to, oh, should say twenty-three. I bet.
Oh, good.
We call it fiscal year, we call it fiscal year twenty-four, but it starts July first, so I probably grouped those two concepts and completed it. But what we really mean is July first of this year, we're in. And and then you can see that the idea of delivering on the strategic plan. There are a couple of elements from the strategic plan that have been sitting in the strategic plan. We've been advancing that work, but we haven't been sliding it up into that higher profile position of the policy agenda and your direction to us. And so this is an attempt to advance those priorities, and we also heard an interest on the part of council of doing more around communications and engagement. So you can see the strategic plan makes a reference to engagement and communications. It makes a reference to an equity assessment of our programs and services. We think we can advance that also as early as before this coming fiscal year, and then continue to work on. It also talks about community engaged policing, which is something that we're continuing to do, and maybe raising it up into a policy agenda profile helps us advance that work and get that notice. You can also see an intent to strengthen the community's resilience and emergency response on the part of the community as well as our own. Those things are all still going on, and maybe putting them up into this higher profile position helps us constantly be reporting on a quarterly basis about the activities in those areas. You can also see council has had conversation about conducting a review of the city charter. And there's also been an interest in understanding the structure of councils committees, boards and commissions, and trying to advance or further neighborhood association effectiveness. So all of those things kind of go together in in those council priorities. And so those are the big ads and changes to the direction that, again, still stay within those four big priorities and help us move those further and faster, essentially. So are there any questions about any of those topics? I was gonna show you next what that looks like in in detail, if you're curious. Okay. Oh. Maybe not. This slide just reminds us of where we are in the whole cycle. This is an ongoing and annual cycle. As I mentioned, you had your first work session about policy priorities. This is the follow-up, and then we start moving into the budget cycle. Zoom room. Okay, so in that category, you're one of those top four priorities responding to our sheltering crisis. You can see the list of strategies that we're working on. There's no change to this list. But you can see we're responding to requests for community, from the community for cleaning up in some areas of town, opening the Nav Center is some another priority, and that's happening really soon. I think it's in March. And we're gonna cite and operate micro shelter village communities. Continue to develop partnerships and funding for sobering. Transition more households into permanent supportive housing, building more of that 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 kind of housing, and then also continuing our regional efforts around the housing issues. Sorry. And then in planning for our future, you can see the major changes highlighted in green. We're taking advancing the housing production strategy into the coming year. The other things that we're still continuing are funding the transportation system plan update, lowering traffic speeds on neighborhood streets, launching the red pairing inventory for natural resources. Again, all of this is follow-on from our Salem, and then furthering the climate action plan and preparing a solid waste policy. So those are all the things that we're doing, including trying to advance the housing production strategy. Any questions on those first two areas? Okay, this is where you're gonna see the most change in engaging our community. We have the customer service center and thinking more about accessibility of our services around improving the customer experience. You can see expanding neighbor-to-neighbor communications, which is something that council put in the budget last year. We're still working on that that priority. And then you can see all these new ads, which are related to engaging our community, improving engagement and communications, the the equity assessment, conducting review of the city charter, and the community engaged policing investment. You can also see an intent to strengthen the community's resilience and our own emergency response. The things that are kind of hidden are, we've already launched the new website, so that's done complete. You can also see the performance measure portal is hidden under the Zoom room, and that's also something that we've completed. We're gonna continue to refine as we go. And then the last one is sustaining infrastructure and services. The verbs are different because the bond's been passed, and so now we're trying to deliver on that and develop those accountability measures that the communities really asked for when we were doing that work. You can see an intent to lower our expenses and also increase revenue and having those conversations. So there, that's all the changes that are are slated based on the feedback we heard in November. And we're prepared to bring that back to you early February, assuming we got it mostly right, based on your earlier conversation. Is there anything that you want to talk about or not? Yes.
I hope people can.
You're good.
So could you tell me a little bit more about the housing, what we call this, the housing and production strategy? How does that work? Like, can you can you walk me through who's gonna be in charge of that? What's the community outreach? I'm assuming, is it one of those one-to-year processes? Can I have a little bit more information?
You can, and we have an expert in the room. Who I, and I'll just phone, who wants to take it? Kristen or Lisa?
Let's go ahead and bring Lisa, then I'll get started.
So I will let Lisa go into more details about what the content and structure of the study will look like. And just in terms of the implementation, so I'm going to take a vacancy. I currently have in the urban development department to repurpose it to a housing-focused position that will do more than the housing production strategy. But we'll work with all of our different incentive programs. So I plan on moving forward with that recruitment this spring. And then we are also convening an internal working group leading into the kickoff of this of this strategy to formulate a lot of answers to a lot of the questions that you just asked, because we haven't had those conversations yet, but we will be over the next few months. And then I'll pass it to Lisa, and she can talk more about how this ties into our Salem and some of our other requirements.
Right there, Lisa Anderson will be the planning administrator. So the housing production strategy is kind of like a phase two of our housing needs analysis, which you remember we did a few years ago, and that looks at your land supply. What do you need for housing? As far as how many people are coming here, what can they afford to get or buy or rent, you know, and income, education levels, that kind of thing. And so for our Salem, we rezoned all the land we needed for, we think we need for multifamily for twenty thirty-five. So we have the land. We made it easier to do multifamily through cleaning up our code in twenty twenty. Now we have mental housing, right? ADUs, all that kind of stuff goes into it. And having production strategy is the next phase is, okay, you have the land, your codes allow people to build this house, housing. What else are you going to do as a committee to encourage the housing? It's just rezoning land to multifamily doesn't necessarily mean it's ever gonna be built, for example, into apartments. So we have financial resources, tax credits, we have grants, et cetera. We're doing all these things. And so do we have a clear strategy that we're putting our money in the right direction to make sure that that housing is built? Like Kristen said, as far as the outreach, we haven't got to that yet. It's not necessarily what kind of housing do you want to see in the city kind of project? It's more about looking at what we can do to ensure that people are building the housing.
Lisa, is that citywide or UGV-wide?
Um, well, the strategy would be citywide. The land supply that we did is UGV-wide. We did redesignate land at the county for for multifamily, for county.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Mr. Daley?
Uh, thank, thank, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that I had a chance to meet with Mike Erdman today, the the director of the local home builders association, and they're very interested in the housing production strategy, and of course, very interested in city potentially looking at barriers to delivery on home production, and I'm sure that will be part of the conversation. So we've got partners out there who are interested in being at the table and part of the conversation.
And leading into the housing production strategy, there's another priority that, I guess, one of our action items, previous priorities, that was to look at the development review process, not committing process. So that's something that we want to undertake this spring before we initiate development and strategy.
Thank you. I'm gonna follow up. I guess you can bring Lisa's work, actually, to look at our hopefully. That we may have something come before council, or is this something that's gonna happen mainly behind the scenes? Does that make sense? I see one.
I I would expect that this would come before council and probably more than once. So I think once we are prepared to begin initiating it, we would circle back with council. And then we would be able to provide more information in terms of, you know, what we're contemplating the outreach process to look like and have some structure to it. Right now, it's all very, very nebulous.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anyone have any other questions about the policy agenda?
Counselor Madrid.
Sorry.
No, no worries. Thank you so much. I always appreciate looking forward to looking at the policy priorities, and I did not see an attachment on the city website that actually listed out all the priorities, so I don't, I'm assuming there are no updates for you, for us to review tonight. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's correct. We will be supplying everyone with a draft of the policy agenda for your consideration at the next council meeting in February.
Perfect. And then along those lines, just to help provide more food for thought, I appreciate the fact that I see this council as addressing affordable housing and seeing that as a high priority, and I'm grateful to my colleague's support on that. It is one of the most pressing needs that I am increasingly being informed about by my constituents, by persons on social media, whether they are in my ward or not. This is something that is really reaching a fever pitch. As some of you have heard me say, we're now one of twenty-five cities statewide that has been identified by the statewide agency, Oregon Housing and Community Services, as being severely rent burdened. We just do not have enough affordable places to stay. And I encourage the city, as we lean into this work and think goodness we are, let's make sure we consider all kinds of ways that we can have affordable housing. We know ADUs are a thing, but have been traditionally underutilized in our city. Not many ADUs have been actually granted, despite the fact they've been available for a while now. We also, and this is for the benefit of my new colleagues who weren't on council at the time, this council has worked with the United Way of the Mid-Valley in the past to help create a space for cottage clusters for low-income seniors. And we were able to do that because the city staff identified a piece of land that we weren't using. And we sold it to United Way for a song, and in exchange, United Way is working on the fundraising they need to do to build those tiny homes that are suitable for low-income seniors. So those are just some of the pieces to the puzzle. In addition to working with our home builders, creating the tax incentives, and making sure folks know about those incentives, all those are good things. Uh, but I just want to underscore that point because it is sorely needed. And I know I have spoken also about mobile crisis units and how essential that is for a city of our size and our needs. And I look forward to us discussing that in the future. But those are just two of the points I want to make sure that I raise tonight, because I know that I continue to receive a lot of interest in both mobile crisis and in affordable housing, as two of the priorities that our community is urging us to pursue. So I look forward to discussing with my colleagues in the future.
Thank you, counselor. And Brittany, you're looking for to us for feedback on the items that were listed in green. Basically, and and any other items, you're just looking for general consensus on what we're thinking over the record transference. Is that accurate?
Yes, please. Generally, I I think that we've done our best to capture the conversation from November, and we're just looking for confirmation that it does, in fact, reflect the priorities of of this body as we advance it into the next meeting.
Counselors, what are you thinking? You're just individually, and we're not gonna vote or anything like that. I I would be helpful if you would say yes, I think this is good, or no, I think we're missing the mark. So I can just share, I think you hit the mark. So thank you. Counselor Barney?
Thank you. Um. Here, hear me? Okay. No, I think it has very much hit the mark. Of course, me, I always have questions about process and how this is gonna be done, but I realize that this is the work plan and the process as to how we're gonna get there is being, will be developed, and it looks really, really good to me. Really, I like the outline.
Great. Any other comments? I see thumbs up from Works five and six, and one and four, and I think I see you nod from work seven. And there's work two, Karen, oh, we've got a virtual, yes. All right. I think we're good.
Thank you very much. We're gonna switch topics.
Great. So now we will move on to item three, item three A, which is a review of cities policies related with persons experiencing homelessness in public spaces. And for that, we have Gretchen Bennett and Dan Ashes.
And team, I'm so excited to have several folks who briefly will share some information to you. The purpose of today is to give you all time to discuss some possible policy considerations working, related to working with people experiencing homelessness. We'll begin with Dan, who will cover the legal requirements that that are and play our legal landscape. Several team members, Jake, Nicole, Suzanne, and Lieutenant Aguilar will briefly help you know what our current approach is. And then we'll circle back to just tee up some potential gaps or questions that are potential policy questions for you as we kind of compare the legal landscape to the current status quo of what we're doing, if you will. And I I really appreciate your time. I don't have to tell you what a urgent issue this is. This is a humanitarian issue. This is very urgent for people experiencing homelessness and for all of the people who live in and on and around in our community with all of our spaces, as people are living in places that are not fit. So thanks for your time this evening, and so we'll turn it over to Dan.
Uh, thank you, Gretchen. I just would like to interject with a comment and our question. I I did get a couple of questions from folks about why we're here, like, so I think it really, I'm assuming, Ms. Gretchen, you're gonna talk to us about what is thirty-one fifteen and why we're here, why we're having this conversation.
Yeah, absolutely. Dan will say this better than me. He's your attorney, but I think that generally, the the legal, the legal landscape has been clarified for us during recent court decisions, as well as just principles like the Eighth Amendment of the Constitution that we already understand. And the Oregon Legislature in the last session, last full session, passed House Bill three-one-one-five, which sets up expectations for cities and communities to ensure cities are responding appropriately and lays out certain terms and principles that we need to pay attention to. So hence the next conversation. Thank you for setting that stage.
Thanks, Dan Ashes, and to you, attorney. So the House Bill three-one-one-five takes effect in Calak. So we're under a bit of a timeline to get the changes made in order to comply with the statutes. Um, so I, our, our goal for tonight is to kind of learn more from council about what you're thinking about the regulatory landscape of the city and how we want to regulate public spaces, given the.
You gotta keep that mic closer, getting it out, so.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm used to the mics in council chambers. They work so well. So, uh, House Bill three-one-one-five and also House Bill thirty-one twenty-four impose certain limitations on cities in regulating public spaces. Essentially, they codify the Boise versus Martin case from the Ninth Circuit and the more recent Grant's pass case. Um, those cases essentially say that you can't have any criminal penalties associated with the condition of being homeless. Um, you, any restrictions you do place off, place on use of public spaces for the unsheltered have to be objectively reasonable, because a bit of a moving target, depending on who you ask. Um, it also applies to car camping, so it's not just folks who are are camping on the sidewalk or other public spaces. Uh, it also provides for a seventy-two hour notice before a public body is going to clean or remove a campsite. Already along the books, I think, provides forty-eight hour notice. This is seventy-two hour notice and also provides enhanced notice requirements. Um, there were a few items in House Bill three-one-five that we talked to the Legislative Assembly about when it was being considered. One was the definition of public property. It's very broad and expansive. Basically, any publicly owned property that's open to the public in any way is considered public property. So it's not just a park, not just a sidewalk, it's a town square, things like that. It's also potentially city buildings. Those are also included in the definition of public property, so it could be the lobby of City Hall for that. So some of the things we're looking at right now are our current city code. So we've got SRC ninety-five-seven-twenty and ninety-five-seven-thirty. Seven-twenty is essentially an outright prohibition on public camping. There are some exceptions. It doesn't have any criminal penalty. It's a civil citation. Um, and we also have ninety-five-seven-thirty, which prohibits leaving personal property unattended on a public site. Neither of these. Neither of these um. Uh, ordinances have been enforced for the most part because it's really not a very effective remedy is to get someone a ticket for something like this. Um, there's also a resource issue as far as who you're going to enforce against, when there's a lot of. Targets, for lack of a better term, there's just not enough resources to get around to that. Um, also, we have the sidewalk conduct ordinance. That was passed a few years ago, prohibited sitting and lying on a public sidewalk during essentially daytime hours. Um, that had a condition that it would not be enforced until the city manager determines that additional daytime space protected from the elements with access to toilets has been open. We have never made that determination, so that ordinance has never been uh enforced either. And frankly, if it were to be effective, so we couldn't force it, we probably wouldn't, it's the same circumstances with the camping and and the personal property. Statute would still apply on having an effective enforcement mechanism. So what we're looking at is going into the code and making some changes. Uh, because of three-one-one-five, we can't just outright prohibit camping, we're going to have to place uh some limitations on that. There, we do have the ability to place some time, place some manner restrictions on it. Some of the ideas that we're looking at. Include environmentally sensitive areas, high-traffic areas where uh vehicle accidents can occur. Um, as well as potentially uh residential zone property, whether it's appropriate to allow camping in residential zones. We're also looking at potentially creating like an ADA corridor on sidewalks. Currently, we have regulations for sidewalk cafes and sidewalk sales that require. Uh, business owners when they're using sidewalk. To keep a uh an ADA corridor open at all times. We would like that to apply to other uses of the sidewalk as well, such as camping. There also is the ability to perhaps limit the manner of camping, whether that's a time restriction, a number of days you can camp on a particular block face. Or how you camp with no open flames and collection of uh personal property and things like that would have to be maintained. We haven't really uh fleshed this out to a great extent because we're looking for some feedback. Uh, from council as far as where you would like to go with this within the limitations of law. Um, with that, I can hand it over to Gretchen unless you've got questions on her section.
Good question, sir. I guess my first thought is, so if we were to impose some of those limitations, that you just posed as potentials. What?
What would be different?
Yeah, what would be different? I mean, why would they be affected than there once we have now?
So within the limitations of three-one-one-five and the the Ninth Circuit cases, we can impose real penalties then. So there is the potential for criminal penalty, that wouldn't be the first option, it never is. But at least we have a uh an effective enforcement mechanism. We still have the the more systemic problems with the jail and everything else. But at least there is the potential uh for consequences for punishment.
Thank you, Counselor Stapleton.
Are we at risk right now with ADA compliance if folks who need those uh services don't, can't access them? Or don't have passage through? Are we at risk there?
Potentially. I know um a suit along those lines has been filed against the city of Portland. Um, I don't really want to comment on a public forum of that. Other than to say that, yes, it's certainly a potential where we could uh be subject to a lawsuit.
Counselor Rebeck.
Thank you. So a couple of questions and uh first of all, a comment. Uh, again, I I tried to offer comments for the benefit of my newer colleagues because I remember being in your shoes and drinking from the proverbial fire hose. Uh, one of the comments I'd like to make is you may notice that there were two cases. That our city attorney cited. One Boise v. Martin, which was based in Boise, Idaho, but the other one was Blake versus City of Grants Pass. And you can Google it, but Blake versus City of Grants Pass was about. Persons experiencing homelessness banding together. And coming up with a class action lawsuit against the City of Grants Pass. Over the restrictions that the city attempted to impose. And I say this because this is a powerful reminder that homelessness doesn't just happen in large cities like Boise, Idaho, or Portland, Oregon. It's happening everywhere, including but not limited to the City of Grants Pass. This is not uniquely an urban problem, it's a rural problem as well. And policymakers like us are often stuck with far too few options. So that was my comment. My question has to do with how do we develop best practices? And I know that this is a statewide change that is happening. And so every city and every county is going to have to come up with these objectively reasonable. Uh, restrictions, which is easier said than done, right? Do we have any guidance from the Oregon League of Cities? Or other resources so that we can do our best to comply with state law? As we enter this uncharted territory?
Um, we we have looked at other jurisdictions and what they're doing, the city of Bend, um, City of Eugene, and Portland. There is a pretty good uh span of options as far as what other jurisdictions are doing, whether it's requiring someone to move here twenty-four hours. And considering whether that's objectively reasonable. Um, versus a a ban on a number of campsites on a particular street. Um, it's also very hard to enforce because you don't know who the first one there was, or the spot campsites, who was fifth and who was sixth. Um, so there's, there hasn't been any uh general guidance uh from the League of Cities. It has been a a topic of discussion, um, not just among the city attorney types, but other folks as well. So I guess we can say comparatively, we can look at what other jurisdictions are doing.
Can I clarify something? No, I, something Counselor Rebeck said maybe, I wonder if we're hearing the same thing. Because I I think an option, I mean, I don't think we're obligated to do anything. Are we, that we could choose to?
We will need to amend our camping ordinance as it is because it probably isn't compliant with three-one-one-five.
We, but we could choose to have no ordinance.
We could.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure people understood the whole instinct.
And one way to address the the objectionally reasonable requirement is to to. To, you know, take out our proposals to the public and meet with the public and find out what they think.
Right, well, I think what they think is that they don't want people sleeping on the sidewalks just like we don't. But the question is, how do you make that stop? I mean, that's the question. I don't think, I mean, Counselor Rebeck asked about best practices, I haven't heard any yet. Or I mean, if if giving somebody a ticket was the, would actually stop the behavior, then I would. I would be interested in talking about it. I haven't ever seen evidence that that's true. Um, I think that what actually is effective is what we've been doing, we just need to do more of it. And sadly, we can't because we can't afford it and we don't even know that we're doing because we can't afford that either. So. Here we go.
To give my my own editorial on that, I mean, we, you and I have had this discussion any number of times over the years and I've had it with. The the chief's predecessor and 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 his predecessor, for that matter, about. Whether, you know, law enforcement is is the appropriate response to this problem and I. I'm sure the folks in the, the folks in the room here would agree with me that it's not. As as did my, as did their predecessors, right?
Gretchen, could you remove whatever that is on our screen?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, forgive me. I was gonna share the next.
Oh, go ahead.
Is that, yeah.
I just, yeah, I, and this is something I've talked with our our local experts, our nonprofit providers, like what is. What is the best practice for convincing people who aren't interested necessarily in in. Seating services, what's the best practice? I haven't gotten a satisfactory answer yet, I, because I don't, nobody has one. Nobody has one yet.
Speaking of answers.
I wish. I think that you're right, Mayor, why I think about all of the things currently in place, I, you know, your work to expand shelter options, to expand. Crane, street outreach are all a significant part of ultimately. What we can do, and that's, I was hoping to give you a brief glimpse tonight of the status quo, which is as you consider this conversation. So first, we have Jake uh coming up with our Salem Outreach Liveability Services Team. And um he'll give you a quick overview of how we collaborate as a team.
Hi, so um, I'm Jake Snell, uh, I'm the coordinator for the Salem Outreach and Liveability Services Team, or like to call it SOS. Um, and this is um a very general. Uh, overview of how the process works when we receive a new. Complaints, if you will, we don't use that word, but so. For this, use the word notice, we receive a notice from the community uh a number of ways. Um, so the city website is the most common one, we have a form that the public can go on to, like, uh, some information. Um, so that's the most common way. Uh, city staff, other departments also notify us, that's pretty common. And then um. Other, we'll also just call it Public Works Dispatch. And those, and notify dispatchers, and that also comes to me. So. Uh, the SOS review is basically a, it's basically me, so I. Read through the complaint, um, go on Google Maps, look it up, find out who owns it.
Hey, could you keep that mic closer?
Okay.
Thank you.
So I I review it, um, decide where it needs to go. Uh, the three most common things, um, places obviously are city sound. Um, privately-owned properties and then other properties, uh, other government agencies like uh. Marion County ODOT. Um, so we filtered those through and I forward them to. Uh, my contacts at Marion County, we're at ODOT, and they addressed it from there. Um, I will usually follow up with the, with the customer and let them know that that's an ODOT or Marion County property. And here's, for in the future reference, here's where, how you can contact them. Um, and private properties. Uh, homeless services team, which is. A part of Salem PD, that's the two officers that are assigned, excuse me. To the SOS. SOS program. Um, they will assist private property owners with the uh. Stress fast law of consent so that they can enforce stress fast laws on that property owner's behalf. Um, and they go through a similar process that they went on city property, and I'll get to that in a minute. So, or we've also gotten complaints that have really nothing to do with. Homeless camps, um, able to see a a way to get ahold of us, they use it, they submit information. Uh, sometimes it's just complaining about their neighbor and garbage piling up in their backyard. Um, which goes to code, code compliance. So I will forward that information to them. At the city side of things. Um, basically assess what it is, is it's. Just garbage that's been illegally dumped somewhere on the side of the road. In which case I'll pass that along to Public Works because that's. What they, that's what they have staff to handle that. Um, is it a person or persons camping in their car or RV? Uh, if that's the case, it goes to code compliance. Um, if it's a camp on city property. We determine whether or not it's occupied, and if it's not. Goes directly to my cleanup team. I have four staff um that are dedicated to that everyday uh cleanup camps. And then if it is occupied. And it's a new camp that we're not familiar with or we don't already know the occupants. Um, the HSC, homeless services officers will go out and do an assessment, make contact. Um, do their best to do outreach with these folks. Um, help them navigate what services might be best for them, put them in contact with those services if they can. If the, if the folks in the camp are interested. Sometimes they're not. And if, but if they are, they'll refer them to Salem Housing Authority or. One of the other many service providers we have here in Salem. Hopefully, they find some services, they get some help, they find a better place to go, a better situation. Uh, and then we. Close a seventy-hour notice, sometimes the notice is much longer than that. Um, but seventy show hours is the minimum that we give people. And then we can conclude the camping. Do some follow-up and then basically we clean up the camp. And we'll go back to that site. If it's a high-traffic area, we'll go back to that site, just monitor it on a weekly basis.
Jake, why would you choose to sometimes give it longer than some turners what circumstances?
Well, there have been times when we have approached camp and. Persons already working with Salem Housing or one of the other providers is on our list. Um, if the conditions are such, they can remain there, safe, if it's still sanitary for them. We'll let them. We'll let them remain until they can see that process through and hopefully get in some permanent housing.
Do you ever provide them with options to help maintain their area, like, you know, sometimes I think people wouldn't necessarily complain. About a homeless camp, if if they just like didn't have garbage everywhere. We provide them with resources to clean up and to dispose of that garbage?
We will. Yeah, we hand out bags, they request bags, we absolutely hand out bags. Um, we will, even if we're there. And they ask us to take some garbage away, we will gladly do that. We can, we will, if it's on city property. We will clean up, as long as they'll allow us to, actually.
Thank you. The other question, to Jake.
Yeah, a question. When you find out the property owner is Marion County or ODOT, I think you could put a few counterparts, what kind of feedback, when have you seen their process? Is it similar to ours, is it better, worse, faster, slower?
You know, I don't.
Back, only because, I know you mentioned that. Because you can stand in my ward and you're looking at three property owners, Salem, ODOT, and the county.
Yeah, that's very common.
But the people, they don't know that. They're just saying. But Salem's with the problem, so I just want to hear your opinion.
I don't know much about Marion County's um process, although. I refer to Marion County Code Compliance Department, I don't know where it goes from there, I don't know what resources they have. Um, ODOT. Does not have dedicated staff like we do, um, so they're. They use um state police. To post, I think, post camps that are on their property, uh, they usually get a ten-day notice though. So I'm not sure why they decided to do that. But they just use their regular crews, bridge crew or road maintenance crews to. To clean it in. So since they have to convert resources, their cleanups happen much more frequently. Pure means, so. It takes them less longer. And I don't know what their customer follow-up process is, if there's any. I will, like I said, notify that person that it's ODOT, and you give them the link to the Ask ODOT. A page to submit from that, from that point on, so.
Hey, I was kind of curious then, your House Bill thirty-one fifteen, it says it requires cities and counties to do this, so how does ODOT fall into that?
Well, we asked that question.
We did. I think generally speaking, ODOT's property. To paraphrase conversations I've had with ODOT, is for transportation purposes. Their property is set up differently or structured differently legally than. City property is is in a different category, all of their properties for transportation purposes, how they speak to that.
In other words, what she's trying to say is that camping is never allowed on ODOT property. Uh, to further restrict it, it's all designated as no camping.
So this doesn't apply to them then, or to the railroads?
I don't know about railroads, I can tell you about some ODOTs that it already applies to, there's no camping allowed on ODOT property, alright? It's all just one property, I'll have a specific list that there is no camping allowed on. There's a little bit of nuance with the uh the Boise Martin decision in that. Um, sidewalks are traditionally public forums where it's not just for transportation purposes. You can have a meeting there, you can have a protest there, you can have a march on a sidewalk. So the they allow, constitutionally allowed uses on sidewalks are much broader than would be allowed on a test of road. So from that perspective, ODOT says, okay, this whole area here is our roadway, so if camp here is just inappropriate and not safe. Versus with the city or county for that matter, sidewalks. The uses of that sidewalk are much broader in general, so are are the limitations on our ability to prohibit people from doing certain type of conduct there.
Counselor Lee.
I live um on Center Street and my house is in the City of Salem, I dealt with um RV parking in front of my home.
My business is on Lancaster in Marion County, not in the city. I deal with a tremendous amount of homeless and drug addicted folks coming in and out. We can't see them coming because we have no windows. So we don't know until they're inside. And that's rough for me. At times during the pandemic, when the Market Street overpass was overwhelmed with traffic, that's when I learned that that's ODOT's property. And it was led, it was allowed to grow into something that was a nightmare. I had it frequently passed under there on delivery or to do, do a grocery run or whatever it was. And on many occasions, had folks run out right in front of them across. Had a couple of people threaten me, one with a skateboard screaming profanities at me. It's unacceptable that that was allowed to go on. I just think it's fascinating that I get to have a foot in each of those places and I think it's extremely important. Do the citizens and of Marion County and in the state of Oregon, that we do what we can to offer, offer safety. And peace of mind to the majority of the population. And that's. That's me. And I, I want to feel safe. And I don't want to wonder if somebody's stable or not. I want to be able to function and operate a business. And live in my home. And know that I'm safe. And so is my family.
Yes, I don't know how to fix it. I don't, but I know that it's unacceptable. And I know that there's a wide array of people in that position. I feel for women and children and families who are struggling financially and I really do believe we provide well for them. It's the folks who don't want to be helped that are causing this problem right now. And. Or those who mentally don't know that they need help, whether it's a drug addiction or an illness. And I, I believe we need to do more for those people who cannot possibly know what's right and what's good for them. If they don't know to wear shoes. And socks in winter or a coat. That's what I see and that's what I.
Thank you, yeah, sorry, I think that we all share your sentiment, we're, we all are equally frustrated with lack of answers, since this is something we start with all the time, and I think this. But that's, that's the challenge, given the current state of all the laws that we don't have a majority over. What's, like I asked earlier, what's the best practice for helping services?
Good evening, I'm Nicole, I'm the Housing Administrator, first Salem Housing Authority. And I do have our special programs manager Sarah Quick here as well tonight to help answer any questions about our outreach. In our community that we do at the Salem Housing Authority. I can tell you that since two thousand and seventeen, we have been out there with the Homeless Final Assistance Program. And it's continued to grow into a bigger outreach and special programs management team that we have today. We're continually finding innovative and creative brand and resources to try to help in this situation in the community. Through the course of these years, I can tell you through the help of the city of Salem and community members. There's been more micro shelters, more UGM has expanded, there's been more women shelters. We've continued to watch the system grow and people to collaborate more and more. So as you see this year, we've actually backed off of some of our homeless rental assistance program. And continue with our outreach assistance programs, which is what we feel effective and best use of our staffing and time out there. During that time, we have a team right now currently of two, we are growing to three here very shortly. We do have another offer on the table. Those two individuals are very well known in the community and out in the camps and with the police department, fire department and different resources. They know they can contact our outreach team at any time and they will respond to the need that comes up and arises. They spend countless hours in Wallace Marine Park, into Brown Park, various different locations, Marion's Square. I can tell you they can go to some individuals one time and get them into a program immediately. They can go to an individual fifty times and still make baby steps to try to get them into some stable housing. That is ultimately the goal, but that's not just what we do out there in the community, we're out there to try to help them. Provide them with any resource direction that can help them in a better, improving their life. I can tell you that some of the things that we do have at the Housing Authority, we also have an immediate need station. Which was a collaborative partnership with the Salem Police Department. And we have a whole array of different products that are in our basement that can help. The police department, fire department, code and compliance twenty-four seven, meet the needs of an individual out on the street. Such as the person without the shoes or the socks or the clothing. They can come down there and they can get anything they need and make that happen immediately. As well as that, when those seventy-two hour notice gets posted, whether it's seventy-two, ten days, fourteen days, twenty days. We're going to be there and we're going to try to touch that individual and see what we can do to help get them some assistance. We may not make any headway and there's often times that we don't. Some of them just completely turn down our assistance and, but we continue the next day and we continue to try until. We can make some headway or they actually vacate on their own. Besides just the homeless response, we also respond with code and compliance and then have uninhabitable conditions. Hoping to do that prevention right off the bat and get the individual into an alternate location before. That need becomes one on the street that we are trying to address as an emergency situation. So all of these efforts, we also go out with SOS team, we're also in the. Internal Homeless Committee, we're at the table trying to figure out what creative solution we can come up with or what grant we can write. To help fill that gap in the community. And this year, we've added a mobile response unit. This is new to us, we, it's just our mobile office. For us to be able to respond out in the field and our staff have a, a, a safe and clean environment to be able to. Do those outreach or intakes or conversations or have all of that equipment on hand in, as they go out into. Larger camps or different situations. This will also help us in the situation with the Orchard Park Fire, we'd be able to respond and immediately provide the needs in the community. As those individuals become homeless that night. All of our teams are trauma informed care, care trained. That includes our maintenance, all the way to our outreach teams, but we all go through trauma informed training, de-escalation training. And we're always looking for diversity, equity, inclusion policies and, and criteria that we can help improve our, our responses. We have added a bi-weekly outreach specialist this year, which will help us in the camps tremendously. We do believe that housing is in human rights and we are trying to find ways to help assist that. We also understand at the Housing Authority that we cannot meet everybody's needs. I have been asked about, to bring up about our referral and coordination. We do often get referrals to our agencies that are beyond our level of care that we can care for. This meaning they may need an appropriate level of drug addiction treatment or even. Assisted living facilities or something more, the Salem Housing Authority is an independent living with supportive services that wrap around. But we do not have the means to do day decay, day-to-day mental health or drug addiction treatment on here. We provide methods, training to keep areas clean, when you were talking about the trash bags, we go through an abundance of trash bags, we also get volunteer. We get donations made to us of trash bags. We try to hold, hold individuals accountable as we're meeting with them, helping them to encourage them to keep that area clean. Show to us, prove to us that you can keep your tent and your, your sidewalk and areas that you are clean. This helps us show that you can also help care for an apartment into the future. So our number one goal is it's either to get them into shelter, some warrants, care. We're looking very much forward to getting into the navigation center and having that as a tool for us as well. There's resources such as RJSAM and all of our staff are fully aware of this and we try to get individuals connected to the right resources in the moment if they're willing to go.
Thank you, Ms. Suits, Councilor Nishia.
Thank you, Mayor Hoy, Ms. Suits, this is wonderful work that you're doing and we all so appreciate it, so thank you for filling us in on that. I'd like to ask you, and not that you would have, I know, an answer you can provide right now this evening. But I'm wondering, based on this new house bill, if there's anything that you've thought about that we might be able to do. In an effort to, to continue to support the homeless in, in getting them housing. Or assisting them in, in more ways than what you're already doing. To make sure that we stay within this new bill that's going to be coming forth to us, I just wonder if you have any thoughts?
So that's a very complex question, I get it very often. I don't think any one of us can do one thing to try to help this situation more, I think this is going to take both city, county, state. Level, more assisted living facilities, more medical treatment facilities that can help these individuals. Many of those that you see out there on the street that. May or may not be considered stable or not, they may not be able to make decisions on their own. And we can't technically put them into decent, safe and affordable housing. We have to keep that housing safe for everybody that lives there. And we have to ensure that the, the individual can reside in that property at a safe level. And sometimes that's a very hard decision for our staff and we're almost happy to get to a qualitative mental health. Level for all of our staff to be able to make those decisions that they are safe to be able to take care of an apartment. Not only for themselves, but everybody around them. So I would say that we need more drug and alcohol treatment facilities, we need more assisted living and more care. For the individuals that we're not able to house right now.
Thank you for that answer and that's basically what I'm also feeling like we need to find more. Ways to help those that need. Very direct care before they can be caring for themselves, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, yeah, we are number fifty in the United States organized in terms of access to behavioral services, number fifty. Below all the other states. Chief, did you have something you wanted to offer on this?
Yes, thank you, can you hear me okay? City manager asked to get a little bit of a police perspective and so, as I've talked about many times before, and there's such good thoughts have already come out of this meeting already. The complexity of this issue and oftentimes in the police we find ourselves right in the middle of that. River meets the road trying to make these decisions in the field, interacting with folks that are, they're worried about their safety, other folks that are in behavioral health crisis. Or addiction where they can't make decisions on their own. And that's where our officers find themselves making decisions, very challenging environment for us too. And we've been limited by, regardless of the new house bill, the case law that's already been existence, existence for a while has limited. But traditionally we may have done some of the situations as far as enforcement, those tools have already been taken away. So we've been learning for several years now how to operate this environment without an, an effective enforcement mechanism. Not to say that police are the solution to this problem or jails or custody, that's not the solution. But there were tools there that existed in the past that don't exist anymore, that's just the nature of it. So from a policing perspective, what we do know, I believe, this is my opinion here, is we see firsthand Salem. Said unmanaged situations, like we experienced for a couple of years going through the pandemic. At our two, our biggest parks, right, unmanaged situations like that. Necessarily or in effect, naturally devolve into very unsafe conditions. They're unhealthy, they become unsanitary quickly, unsafe, by unsafe, or the residents themselves and folks in the area. We saw assaults and serious crimes occurring, so there has to be, there's a true physical safety component. To unmanaged situations involving folks experiencing homelessness. Of course not everyone experiencing homelessness is crime. But there is definitely a physical safety component, which is why there is a place for the police to be involved. So we're not the solution to the problem or a key stakeholder, but to be at the table as a key stakeholder. I mean, working for collaborative responses to this issue. I think at, at the core here, there's a definite systemic problem, we've touched on it a few times here, with folks that are resistant to services. Willingly or unwillingly because they're just simply incapable of making a good decision about their own health. Because of addiction, behavioral health or combination thereof. And there's currently no way, it's extremely high bar, to take someone's physical, take someone into physical custody or treatment. Civil commitment, so to speak. The, the laws here in Oregon and the case law that exists has made that so challenging and possible. Plus there's no, no capability for that to even occur, limited capacity we have in our mental health system now. It's just non-existent. And so from our perspective, in a place where enforcement is almost not a tool that we can use at all. And there's almost no way to take somebody's physical, taking them into physical custody to get services or treatment. So it's frustrating for us as well, just like no one has an answer here. We, but there's definitely a safety component, that's what I can emphasize budget, so when you look at what might work best. I think that there's longer term solutions that we're all working towards, or permanent supportive housing, present services. Years out, meantime, there's a problem on the street today that we must deal with, calls a scene. And so how do we deal with that, how do we manage that while we're working on our longer term solutions? That's kind of what we're talking about especially. And so. The extent, the, the two additional officers that you gave the police department just recently. Last this week, at the start of the state grant, we got those into the budget, we're extremely thankful for that because they've been such a valuable add to what we're trying to mitigate and manage. So we talked about the team with SOS team that's there, doing all that work, if you looked at that flow chart, how complicated that was. Just what you think is a simple complaint about camping on a sidewalk, it sounds so easy to me. It's extremely complex. And several routes there are impossible to accomplish without a piece of all. To arrest somebody, but just to get that processed. Keep everybody in safe, whether it's a service provider, the police officers themselves, folks experiencing homelessness. It's that safety component that we're interested in, by adding those two officers, really increased our capacity to do. Before, you didn't have any dedicated services to do that work. And so everything was taking much longer, took forever to get done, seemed like no action was happening. Now you're starting to see some results in certain areas now. Traditionally, having payments have lasted for a long time, those are being cleaned up sooner. Without making arrests, it's the right way. So it's just been such a valuable add that, that addition of just two positions from the police department, I think have paid off exponentially. So I think we need more of that type of work in the meantime, or we work on longer term solutions as well. That's just a bit of the police perspective on this issue.
Thanks, Chief. Ms. Suits, did you have a, oh, Councilor Gonzalez has a question.
Yeah, I mean, I did follow in a bunch, well, I, I think we all have to be on the same page because the people in this room aren't on the same page, our, our public's confused. You know, I think I agree with you, the diagram is, I don't know if you did it, but. Extra stars on the forehead, but we need that document out there. Now, I think I went, I think I talked to you, you know, when we're talking about being on the same page, I even talked about. I mentioned that officers would sometimes say, we got to talk to the council, like there was this little cat and mouse game that. Or at least when the public were trying to get answers, clearly they're really worrying, they would get like a little bit of a runaround and that created frustration, but I don't hear that. And so I want to thank you for that. And. The places that are common hotspots, you said that, isn't it once a week, they've started to break faces? Now, what, what are you doing other than just, something that, because I know there's some areas that will just pop up right away. And also there's some. Some little negative, more of a negative effect on our parking garage, so I'm going to get a lot of complaints on our parking lot. You know, something, because there's some hotspots, spots around High Five, Lancaster, you know. What's, what's being done there to try to stop it?
That actually is a perfect segue into what I wanted to talk about, I'm Debbie Aguilar, I'm with Salem Police Department. And the chief spoke about HST, the homeless services team at a prior meeting, but. What we do speaks to what your question was, which is what do you do other than just go out once a week? And so I want to say just a little bit about what HST does, so the homeless services team partners with SOS, so it's two officers who go out. And their primary role is when we have a location that's identified as where individuals are living, their primary goal is to go out. uh where individuals are living, their primary goal is to go out and make contact. So they make contact with those individuals and try to figure out who are they? What are their barriers to receiving services? Are they even eligible for services? Are they wanting services, but maybe there's a barrier to it? So a lot of times they'll see maybe an individual has a warrant. And if they get rid of that warrant, they'll be eligible for certain services. Well, we can certainly help with clearing a warrant to get them eligible for services. Or maybe we'll find out that they were on uh S H A housing list, but they moved areas and they don't know where they're at now. We've got contacts with S H A. We can bring an outreach worker out, uh, figure out whether they're still on the list. If they aren't, get them back on the list. So trying to work through those situations, at the same time, the officers are letting them know, hey, maybe this isn't the best place to camp or to be uh at this location. Maybe we need to try to find uh a different area. So maybe we have contact with um one of the micro shelters and we know there's an opening, try to get them in there. Um, but also reaffirming that, you know, we we probably can't have you at this location. It's untenater, whatever the conditions are. Um, eventually we make the decision that we may have to to post that location and have them move. But one nice thing about HST is we actually meet once a month with our service providers. All our local service providers come to the police department and we meet once a month and we talk about what it is that we need to do to help provide services to these individuals. So it opens up that communication. So we're able to tell them, hey, maybe we have this camp and we really know that there's some addiction going on there. So we know a recovery service uh that has outreach workers that maybe can go out and try to make contact with those individuals. We also sometimes will partner with them uh for resource fairs. So maybe we know that there's a location, maybe it's a larger camp that we need to get rid of. But or we that we need to um clear, but uh we know that there's uh quite a few individuals there and uh maybe some opportunities to provide resources. So we have a resource fair where we have maybe S H A comes out. We have some addiction recovery services come out. And everyone meets and we do this oftentimes many weeks before we eventually go out to do the cleanup. Um, so we're, once we do that um that cleanup and we get the the camp clean, that's when the officers will go back to those areas where sometimes um tents will start popping up after we clear an area to reconnect with those individuals. Were they the same individuals that were there? And again, it's more of what the officers discussed was that sometimes it takes a hundred contacts before an individual is ready to receive services. So they go, we're always asking, we're always there. Every time we're there, we ask them, are you ready? Because on that time that they say we're ready, they have that connection with that service provider that they can bring them in and get them connected. Um, so that's really the the whole goal of the HST team is not enforcement related, you know, their their goal is never to make an arrest. Their goal is to bring service providers and other city entities alongside us to get the services that those folks need and the ones that they're willing to accept. Um, and then with the goal that then we don't have those reoccurring locations um that we know about. So I don't know, does that answer, kind of answer your question, but then also explain a little bit about what uh Gretchen was hoping that I would talk about?
Yeah, totally.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, Lieutenant Aguilar. You just described perfectly that rapport building, which is the thing that builds trust with people who are generally service resistant. That evidence actually shows that over time that does work. I know it can be very frustrating. It can take a hundred times. But ultimately, the evidence shows that at some point that will I also wanted to make people aware that, you know, through our work with Homeless Alliance, we are a built-for-zero community, which means that we have a by-name list of of people who are hardest housed in our community. And we have um service providers from all over the area who meet every week and go over that list and they work on getting those folks into services. We do it at an individualized assessment. It's called the B I Spadat. And it's a vulnerability assessment and determining what the needs are. People are going over that list and working at those folks into services. And so that's, there's a lot that goes on that we're not even talking about tonight, but there there's, we're just kind of the iceberg on the different services and different efforts. But our work on the homeless alliance um coordinates all of this, so. Councilor Stapleton has a question.
Um, this is for you, Chief. I actually have two. Um, I know that you are very um interested in data. And I ju- I think this is an area where we are unable to really keep a lot of data because we can't make any assumptions about housing status. Um, but I guess my my question is, do we have data on where the the crime is occurring? Is it for the assaults or whatever it is that folks are rightfully afraid of? Is it happening between members of the same community or is it happening between members of our unhoused community against other folks in our community that are either passing by or whatnot? And I know that you probably don't have that data.
It is a challenge to collect data. From a policing perspective, our data has always been about crime. Homelessness isn't a crime, clearly, excuse me. And so you may have a crime that involves somebody who's unsheltered and necessarily is tracked. It's no type of crime occurred in there. It's always been a challenge to identify how many crimes involve folks who are unsheltered and and the demographics there. That's just a challenge. We're working to build our analytical muscle, build out a crime analysis. Flesh that out a little bit better, uh, but we don't have a lot of that capability right now. Anecdotally, I can tell you, I know of crimes involving both of your situations. Times where folks in and sheltered camps have been um abusers or victims within the camp itself. And I also know folks who've been outside the camp, who've been victims from folks running. So it does occur both. I just can't.
Do you think that's something that in the future we'll be able to have that information?
Do you have any more, Debbie? I think we're gonna have to build a way for better tracking, we document crimes, have more data capture. This is for person unsheltered, what's their situation? And then what's the definition of homelessness, right? Folks are transited away where they live from home to home with a neighbor or with family. Technically, they're homeless. Um, where you have other folks that are unsheltered living in a camp. Degrees or definitions of homelessness to you. So how do we define that? More you look into it and the more complicated it gets, but we are already looking at ways to track better if a crime involves someone's.
So you maybe have another question. So can you hang on for just a second? And where did Dan go? Oh, hi. Um, in this House bill, is homelessness defined?
Homelessness i- is not defined in the House bill, I recognize. There is a HUD definition. There is a HUD definition, almost, that I I don't recall the exact definition, but we did use it as part of our Human Rights Chapter amendments. Basically, it's it's lack of access to uh habitable.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then my last question for you is, um, are two officers that are going out into the field, do they wear anything on their person that differentiates them from other officers? Like when they're walking in, do they look like just your regular officer or do they have some kind of clothing or identification that lets people know that they're there for a different reason? Yeah, um, so they wear um a vest similar to what our patrol officers would wear. They wear a different, almost a similar color to my uh B D U uniforms and the and they do drive a marked patrol car with, and that was actually on purpose, uh, because we want the individuals to correlate the HST with the police in that when we show up, it's not always because we're going to make an arrest. Um, it's because we have other um other means or other things that we do in the community. So we go and we help. We want to to build that connection. So it was purposeful in that their uniform be very similar to what a police officer would be wearing. So they, when they walk into the camp, um, they wouldn't differentiate them from necessarily a a patrol officer. Thank you.
Councilor Hoyt.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mayor, you mentioned the homeless alliance, and which made me think of the point in time count that's coming up. Um, is, does the point in time count provide name of who we're dealing with and what their circumstances are? Or is it just simply a count?
So we have, we have a couple of different ways to get data. The point in time account is just a snapshot of who we can encounter on during that particular account. Yes, they do, they do have information about who we're dealing with and what their situation is. It's not in depth. But we have another much more accurate way of tracking data. We do have a lot of data about our homeless folks. Um, it's our coordinated entry system that uh basically the the homeless alliance requires that if you're going to work with us, you have to enter your data into a common database so that we can track um all sorts, so we can have all sorts of data about folks, how long they've been homeless. That's how we know that the uh, for instance, the chronically homeless situation in the Marion pulp region is twice the national average. Even through data, through that sort of data, it's really long-term data. We know that and we know oftentimes people will say to us, well, I know that people who are homeless here, they they got bussed in here and they're not burned here. And we know that that's just not true because we have been tracking folks over a long period of time. We know that they've lived most of their lives here, that sort of thing. So we have a ton of data available to us through that database that isn't really connected to the point in time count. The point in time count is a, is a head requirement to it's a kind of a nationwide way to track homeless. It's it's one measure. But uh, we really have another way to look at data in much more detail.
Okay, um, just one point further, the um yesterday, I don't know, this is probably county, right, which isn't city's responsibility, but it still impacts Salem, because it's Salem. Um, Winco at twenty-two in Lancaster. I was there at six thirty yesterday morning and there must have been fifteen vehicles. Obviously, people are living in them, parked in the parking lot there, whether it was an R V or a download um stationed by in or whatever. Is anybody counting those people?
Yes. Yeah, well, on that, during that point in time count, we will go out and contact all of us, uh, everybody that we can find. In addition, service providers are are contacting people in county folks who come into their for their ser- into services on those particular days. So yeah, everybody is, everybody that we can find will be counted in our two county region.
And as a, as a, just as a person driving and seeing that, I thought, oh my gosh, I just get here off of twenty-two and I five, and now we've got more? You know, or are these people that we already know about? That's the question.
And we would know the answer to that. We knew the people, exactly what you're talking about. We can look and see what the context history has been and that sort of thing. We actually have, we have data on it. Councilor Nardine.
Thank you. While we're discussing data, um, I think it's important to take into consideration the kinds of things that our public safety responders do track in terms of data right now. And although they don't necessarily track calls involving homelessness for the reasons the chief said, they have tracked E D P or emotionally disturbed persons' calls for quite some time. And both our Salem Fire Department and our Salem Police Department track calls for service involving emotionally disturbed persons. And that term E D P can cover a huge range of types of incidents. It could be someone with a wide variety of behavioral health issues. It could involve safety threats. It might involve physical health elements. There's, it's a huge category. And that in and of itself can make data a challenge. But the reason I mention is that I requested that data. And the Salem Police Department said that they received a sixty-five percent increase in E D P calls for service between the years twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one. And I just want to point that out. We often hear, our city doesn't do mental health. Behavioral health is not in our wheelhouse, not our jurisdiction. That's the county's problem. But in reality, who gets called out to calls involving behavioral health crisis? Law enforcement does, among many others. And I think the dr- the increase in calls, sixty-five percent between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one is huge. There, the overall cases have dropped during that same timeframe, which are developed incidents, not calls for service, which can arise from a variety of sources. But I just wanted to point that out, that when we're looking at data, we need to ask ourselves, who is in crisis and who is responding to that crisis? And are we sending the right person to the right job? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Who's up next?
Hi, I am Suzanne Reynolds and I'm the Code Compliance Manager. And just to give you a little background on that, I'm also the manager for the Park Ranger for the Parking Enforcement um Division and for Code Compliance. So my feet are in this field all of the time. Um, it, over the past few years, we have teamed up heavily with the police department and we work heavily with SOS every day. Um, and I think probably the best connection that we've made is that we are actively involved with the service provider meeting that Lieutenant Aguilar started to put together um quite a while ago. That is where we start. Um, our clientele are both the homeless and citizens of this community. So it's really difficult when there's somebody giving us a call that has a an R V parked in front of their house where there's people residing. And they are in violation of multiple orances. Um, there's garbage on the ground. There might be my favorite word, affluence, leaking from um the vehicle. There are many reasons that that violation is um a public safety hazard. And we have to immediately address it for those people that live there. But we are also looking at it from the the perspective of the person that's living in that vehicle, which is uninhabitable, unsafe. Um, a health hazard to them themselves. So the first thing we do is we show up and give them all of the provider information we can possibly give them. We we talk to them, we contact the SOS, um, S S O S, if we feel there's a need to. Sometimes people are really happy to just move along because they want to get away from us, quite frankly. But also, um, they understand that they are um causing a situation. Our procedures are that we show up, we give them this information, we tell them what they're in violation of, and then if um, we give them notice, if they don't move along, there is the occasion that we actually have to take away what they're living in. Which is a really horrible thing for an officer to be standing there, meeting someone, talking to them, and then say, this vehicle is the thing between you and the street. And we have to take it away because it's in violation of all these other codes. So that is something that House Bill will probably be addressing. Um, all of our, all of our staff are now fully trained, um, and trauma informed. We're taking classes constantly in our, the police department so that our officers have that empathy, but we also have that empathy for the citizens that are scared. Um, and that their children have to walk home past those vehicles that are being housed in.
Miss Reynolds, I apologize for interrupting. You said a couple of times, you've kind of differentiated between homeless people and citizens of our community. And they really, all our citizens, they just have different circumstances. And I I know it wasn't your intent, but I just think the language is really important sometimes. You know, we have houseless citizens and we have people who are, who are sheltered and, you know, I I get it because we're having that conversation, but I just think it's really important to be mindful of our language when we talk about folks. Um, even if you're homeless, you're still a resident or a citizen.
Yes, sorry about that.
Thank you.
Um, I've been on the the enforcement side for a long time, so it's hard for me to think of other words to use. Um, part of the stuff we also deal with are um people living in the parks because of our Park Ranger. Um, he works very closely with Salem Police Department because he works on the weekends and he's all alone. So um, he, you know, he's out there, he observes the camps, he observes those locations that are building up quickly. Um, where lots and lots of tents, where it just was one last week when he was here. And so he makes contacts and he will actually also um post those tents to let them know, hey, you're camping in a place that is not legal. Um, and you're gonna have to move along. And usually then SOS follows up to go back out and talk to those individuals and um give them even more resources. And if there's somebody we know, we hug them up. Um, we talk to Nicole and her people every day, probably twenty times a day. Um, we try to get everybody housing as as best we can. We've gotten many, many people. Um, we try to get everybody housing as, as best we can. We've gotten many, many people into um, the shelters, the pods. Um, and other um, livability situations. Um, one of the other issues with um, code compliance is that we try really, really hard not to make people homeless. One, with their vehicles, but also because we deal with dangerous and uninhabitable um, homes. Sometimes it's due to defects in the homes. Sometimes the homes have been burned and people have nowhere to go. They have no insurance. So we do our very best to get with all of the social service providers to find a way to keep the people living there housed. Um, to not let them go into that crack where then we're dealing with them in a different way. So it's um, it's difficult. We have a lot of codes that say you can't stay on the street overnight. Um, we try instead to let people know there are all their options and to send them along to um, someplace better if we can.
Councilor Stapleton.
Thank you. This question is actually for Mr. Staley. Um, I heard um, Suzanne Reynolds talk about trauma, sorry, trauma-informed training several times. Um, and I think that's fantastic, that so much of our staff are getting trained. Um, but yet the council sits here and we're gonna be making decisions. And I have never gone through any trauma-informed training. Um, so I'm, I'm feeling a lack in that for me personally, and I don't know uh, how the rest of council feels. I have my own lived experience, um, and that is very valuable and it keeps coming to mind here in this conversation. Um, but maybe something a little more formal might uh, make me feel a little bit more capable of making a fully informed decision about something that's sensitive.
I think we, we certainly can make that opportunity available to council members and I would encourage us to do that. Obviously, we ask a lot of you already, but I've been through trauma-informed. Um, response and it's in, it's an important perspective. And you understanding that we bring that perspective to our work, I think is valuable for all of us to understand. What the baseline we're operating from. So I think that's a wonderful suggestion. Uh, and we will work to figure that out.
Ms. Bennett, where are we at in terms of our?
Thank you. We're at the end of what we brought to you today. Again, we wanted to bring you the current legal landscape. A picture of our current work and then point out some of the areas where, um, there may be some areas where we'll need to bring back some policy ideas for your consideration, which are summarized again up on the wall for you tonight.
Thank you. So now might be a good time if we have questions or comments, uh, I mean, I think Council Stapleton has a couple to start with.
Always. Um, earlier we were talking about um, camping near busy roads and environmentally sensitive areas. Has the staff looked at what that would even look like? You know, do we have a map that would kind of, you know, lay out those environmentally sensitive areas? And then what are the qualifications for a road to become, you know, an area that, um, you know, camping?
Thank you for asking that. Not in any great detail, no. I've certainly had informal conversations about high-traffic areas. Um, proximity to roadway, um, you know, sometimes we know it when we see it. And then through some conversations with the Public Works Department can start to define what that means in our road system. With environmental areas, I've again had the chance to speak with several of our team members within Public Works to have some detailed notes about what that could look like. But we didn't want to go too far without getting a sense from all of you about where you'd like to see some, some thoughts. And, and so like, for example, having an ability to, to conclude camping near high-traffic or environmentally sensitive areas, um, is an example of something we can bring back for your policy consideration. But those would be place restrictions that are appropriate as a legal landscape.
And I, I would be really interested in, in seeing what that would look like. Um, another question I have is for Mr. Asherson. Do we have the ability to require any providers to lower barriers? I know we were talking and, and the chief was talking about just how varied and high some of the barriers um, to get into any kind of housing. From different providers around the city could be, and I, I've heard about those different, whether it's a curfew or um. Whether it's they're sober or not, or pets or couples. I mean, there's so many different things that folks maybe don't think uh, through. But is there any way that we can work that angle? Can I say that? That angle?
I, I don't know from a regulatory sense, that that's something we could do, but we do provide grants and condition grants on certain conditions. That might be a better way to approach it.
Thank you. Um, the only other thought that I have, this isn't a question, but more of a thought that I'm thinking through is, is just as a council, maybe trying to figure out. Where, what our lane is, for lack of a better word. And, you know, I think Council Nordak has brought it up a couple of times about, um. You know, what the city um, can do, what the, what the county does do. I really hate to see um, services duplicated in a way that's ineffective. Um, I would rather see more communication between those entities and collaboration. Um, so that we are using every person that we have, every dollar that we have in the most effective way. Um, and so I would love to, as a council, try and figure out, you know, what, what we decide as a council are going to be the things that the city is going to really focus on and what our responsibility is. And then who we can partner with for the other things. Um, you know, behavioral health is one of those things. I'm not sure I would ever view that as a city function. I know that we, you know, this trauma-informed interactions that we have, obviously that kind of gets into that behavioral health mindset. Um, but we're not providing a, a service per se. We're making accommodations um, through our interactions. So I'm really interested in that, um, fellow counselors, uh, and trying to figure out um, if that's something that, a conversation that we might want to have in the future.
Thank you, Councilor. Uh, other questions or comments? Uh, City Manager Staley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to respond briefly to Council Member Stapleton. At your next council meeting, we will be talking about mobile crisis response. Uh, it, it is an agenda item. Uh, we have prepared a staff report and some recommendations about how we move forward with that. Uh, basically agreeing with your, your premise that we need to do uh, what we're doing. And we need to let the county do what they're doing and we need to support them in their efforts to be successful at that work. But we'll have a, a more in-depth discussion about that next week.
Sir Gonzalez.
A real quick comment on the high-traffic areas. I know that we're dependent, maybe they're safety considering cars, you know, driving by. But yeah, I think that's really nice to hear from some of these people that are living there. So a lot of them are in those high-traffic visible areas for their safety. You know, because that just keeps them visible, they're in public view and it's, they're less likely to be robbed, raped, you know, so that's why they like to be in real visible areas. And then also remember that if we move that option, they're gonna be pushed into residential areas. Other words, no other place to go.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor White.
I just wanted to uh, offer my thanks to staff for the work that you do. It can't be easy. And um, it's every day for you. So thank you for the hard work that you do and for what you brought here tonight to inform us about what's going on and being done. Um, and to all of us, I just want to say, it may be hard, but we're not giving up. And I don't want us to run in fear based on a decision in Boise or anywhere else. I want us to be brave and address the problem and see what we can do. But if we, you know, if that makes sense, if we hide because of law is coming. Then we don't do what's good for folks, then we're wrong too.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Barney.
Thank you. Um, yeah, this has been very informative tonight. I really appreciate it. Uh, I understand where Councilor Boyes is coming from. Yeah, that's one of the reasons why we need to, I mean, for me, I would love to see a whole list of possibilities and options. Like we did all back on one of the other homeless task forces where we went through how we were gonna address um, some things. Um, and so my, I guess my question is, what is the next step? What is our plan? Um, what are we gonna do to problem solve and develop some options to start looking at? Who's gonna be involved? Uh, what kind of outreach will that be in task force? What, what are your thoughts as to what's gonna happen next?
Ms. Bennett, would you like to give that a shot?
Sure. So far, what we have in mind are two conversations um, with people in Salem in February. And that could include stakeholders, people with lived experience, community members who want to talk to us. We have planned something on February twenty-third, which is a Thursday at Center Fifty Plus in the evening using auditoriums. Where we'd have tables and people and we can have lots of conversations based on topic area, where we hope to do a lot of learning. And then we're also gonna do something, I don't have a date for this yet, on a digital environment for people who might prefer a Zoom sort of environment as well. And I'm just gonna do one of those in February. Um, we're continuing to monitor what other cities are doing and learning. I was on a call today with all the communities that participate in the, on the West Coast, trying to listen for good, best practices and ideas that maybe we haven't heard yet. So I think we're gonna be gathering that information as well as starting to draft what we're hearing from you tonight. Like, for example, you mentioned a list of ideas, we don't show us some options. I'm hearing you talk about environmentally sensitive and high-traffic areas, you know, with recognition of, okay, but what would, what would be the impacts or consequences of that? So we'll, we'll try to start packaging some of that together for you. Um, you may want to make some modifications to policy before July one, so you'll be seeing all of that coming up in the next couple of months.
Thank you, Councilor Stapleton.
Will there be any direct outreach to folks who are experiencing homelessness?
Yes, yeah, absolutely. Um, and finding the, a kind of a decentralized approach seems to work well. Like working with people who help me talk with people and kind of getting out, having individual conversations. I'm lucky to start up to develop some relationships on my own and then I also work with others who connect me to people who want to talk.
I, I would just like to say a couple of things, uh, reminders. One is that this council funded through the Homeless Alliance, a conference coming up in May. That's going to work on affordable housing strategies. Uh, we're trying to help our regional partners and us as well learn uh, more innovative ways to provide affordable housing. So that's something that you'll want to keep uh, your eyes out for. I can't recall the date off the top of my head, but it's in May. Uh, watch for that. Also, if you haven't signed up for, and this goes to the public or staff or counselors, anybody listening. If you haven't signed up for the point in time count, we desperately need volunteers. And what the, what this does is it helps us determine how much better resources we're going to get into our two county region. Uh, on, there are three dates that we're doing this count, but the real, the huge date that we really need help with is January twenty-eighth, Saturday. Uh, it's about three or four hours and we will train you. You won't be going into situations where you're uncomfortable. You'll receive training to, to uh, understand how to do this. And uh, we have several areas um, here in the city. I, I think most of the county, local county areas are pretty well-covered. Really need more folks here in the Salem area, so please sign up. You can go to the Housing Alliance homepage to, to find a signup link. So that's M W B A homeless dot org or something like that. If you Google it, it will have Valley Homeless Alliance pointed. Uh, so I really am asking all of us to sign up. And if you're signed up, I'll be out in East Salem that day. We'll be having um, Margaret Salazar, who is the Regional Representative from HUD for HUD, joining us. So she's um, a member of the Biden Administration, so she's gonna be joining us to try to elevate, elevate the conversation and, and the spotlight on this really important issue. So I encourage folks to uh, sign up for that. Ms. Bennett, do you have other things you need from us tonight? Are there, are you looking for more feedback? Um, or do you have what you need?
No, I'm good. Thank you. I welcome, nothing we have to accomplish tonight. I welcome thoughts, conversation, follow-up, as you wish.
Thank you. So counselors, I would encourage you, if there are any more questions or comments, please uh, house the time. Also, uh, meet with Ms. Bennett eventually afterwards, um, ask more questions, get more information, that sort of thing. Yeah, Councilor Boyd.
Thanks. I just have one more comment. I should never, uh, what do you call that? Talk about case law or whatever. I don't know. Whatever happened in Boise, Boise was a weird thing and it made stuff happen. And Mr. Asherson, City Attorney, I'm counting on you to keep us within the boundaries of what is safe and right and good for the city. And, and legal, that is, yes. So please uh, forgive me for any misstepings and let me know how I can help.
Thank you. That's one, it's a really good example of when one jurisdiction does something that maybe is outside of the confines of the Constitution that it impacts all of us, because this is a case that happened in Boise, Idaho. But we are all, because we're all in the same uh, US circuit, it's, it impacts all of us. We all used, when I was in law enforcement, we all used to really get upset at our colleagues at the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office because they made a horrible case law for the entire western United States. Crazy outrageous things that had really bad impacts. City Manager Staley.
I think we're a ways away still from having a clear path forward here. So what I would suggest is that we come back, you know, a couple of months. I know we have some space on our workshop calendar where we can plug in another conversation. And there, we'll bring forward a draft of some paths forward for your consideration and we can fly between this going forward.
Excellent. I didn't think we were quite there, so that's, that's really, I mean, a great idea. Help us kind of stay, lock down this path to try to figure out a better, better solution. So is there, are there any other questions or comments? Councilor Barney.
Okay, being a uh, contract interpreter. Uh, the reasonable protect, protection, reasonable protection clause things. It, it just seems like we need a few kind of boundaries there as to what it is.
I think we'll get those as the, as more case law evolves. We will find out, the court will tell us what reasonable means and that's honestly, I, I don't mean to be flippant. That's how those terms get combined over time, what reasonable is. And, and it's a, it's not a great way to make law or public policy. By, I'm going towards decisions, going to the strategist and has other thoughts, but that's generally how that goes. No thoughts I want to share in that, so. Any other questions or comments? Checking our online counselors, not seeing any answers there either. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.